When you're ready.
Oh, okay. Yeah, let's start it. Morning, everybody. Uh, do we do a roll call?
We do a roll call.
A roll call.
Tim Byer?
Here.
Tommy Lawson?
Here.
Scott Pell?
Here. Okay, let's do the call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off is approval of minutes from the May 5th, 2025 commissioners meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Uh, next up is the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, old business, we have none, new business.
I wasn't given. Do we have any maintenance performance funds? Is Carol here? Okay, I don't have any of those. Order appraisals. The parking lot that is in front of the just, the new justice center that is at, on near the bowling alley, there have been discussions about what to do with that. Before we really know what to do with that, we probably need to get appraisals to determine what the fair market value of that property is. We've been approached with, um, the bowling alley landowner wants to sell his property and wants to enter into an agreement with the county about that parking lot area. So before we get too far into the weeds, I don't know that appraisals have been ordered on that in a while, so.
So are you suggesting we move?
I'm suggesting that we get to appraisals to know what the fair market value of that property is and then you can determine what you want to do with it.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. I did a little bit of background on that. They've been in a little agreement since the 50s or early 60s.
Sixty-two.
Crazy, but, um, okay. Use of the courthouse rotunda for the drug court graduation. Please. It's my fault.
Close. I'm Michael Nance, community corrections. We're requesting permission to use the courthouse rotunda at four o'clock on Thursday, June 26th. That will be our first drug court graduation, which we're obviously really excited about. Judge Shine would like to hold graduations in the rotunda going forward. So really, my question today is two parts. First of all, seeking permission to use the rotunda on June 26th, and then looking for advice from you as to whether we can have blanket permission going forward that if we notify the sheriff's department and max of future dates of graduations, if they can just be approved, or do we need to come back every single time we want to use it for drug court graduations because this will become a more regular thing now that we have participants starting to finish the program.
I really have no problem with you just approving it if that's what you want to do.
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
So just to be clear, is that the right to individuals, the sheriff's department and maintenance each time of the future dates?
Yes.
Okay, nothing to you guys?
I'm giving, as long as legal counsel's good.
I haven't, it doesn't offend me at all that you would have a blanket approval as long as those two agencies recognize and are okay with it.
Sheriff's office didn't have a big problem with it. I think it'd be nice to have it on a calendar and make sure those dates are out because you're gonna get asked for other dates too.
It's simple enough for you as well on the dates. No problem. And though the drug court hearings themselves are closed hearings, but the graduations are open to the public. So if anybody wants to come and see our first graduation on June 26th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Bowman and Associates LLC appraisal request. Jennifer Ladd.
Good morning, Jennifer Ladd, Boone County assessor. I am coming to you with, I sent over the intent to have someone do an appraisal for me on a property that is going in front of the Indiana Board of Tax Review. There's really the best, this is just really the best way to get the fair market value. They are disputing with me the process of how we came to the number that they're assessed at. House was purchased for $2 million. They were assessed at $1,009,000 and some change. The, uh, once we reviewed it, we did look at comparables and it showed that, they bought it in 2021. We did look at comparables and it showed it was, it was less. So we changed it to what the comparable showed and now they're taking us to, or taking me to IBTR because they think it is worth a million bucks. So the appraisal is $850,000 and it has a potential to gain about $2,000 to $3,000 in taxes for the county if we do it because I think it will come in higher than where the board set it.
You have the funds, right?
Yes, I have. I have the appraisal funds.
No discussion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Randy's purchase contract. Nick Parr.
Now Max.
Are we doing it? I'm sorry, I just wanted to.
Max Menon Hall. Morning, guys. Uh, yeah, Brandyce purchase agreement for a, it's called a four-speed loader. Piece of equipment that we're replacing at the highway department. Um, the equipment that we have now is a 1986 model. Costs a hard hit when we go through it. Uh, we have it on our five-year plan as a, uh, to be a lease purchase. So we're gonna spread it out over three years. Total purchase price will be $346,090.50. And then, uh, reached out to three lenders. Huntington Bank came back with the best, uh, three-year plan. So our three payments will be, um, 122, 755 a year.
Starting this year?
First payment will be when we take, take ownership of the street.
Do you have the dollars this year?
Yeah, we have a bunch of money for this year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Subject to legal. I haven't read the contract yet.
Move to approve, subject to legal, second.
On both, correct. For Huntington and Brandyce.
If I have both. I, no, I have the Brandyce contract. They were attached.
Oh, second.
Next question on that same thing, um, obviously subject to legal. What's that?
They didn't actually finish the vote.
Yeah. You have a motion, a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay.
Brandyce would like to do a docu-sign on that. Can I have approval to do the docu-sign, obviously after Beth gives us her okay?
I don't care. Do you guys hear? Scott signs a docu-sign?
No.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. BFNS Inspection Services for Bridge Number 44. Mr. Parr.
Nick Parr, we kind of have a, uh, first item I have is the bridge inspection services, so it's construction inspection for the rehabilitation of that bridge. It's on, uh, 400 East, north of 750 North. We were recently awarded community crossing dollars for this project. Already have the contractor onboard, intending to do construction right now. Their, their schedule is in September. It's this fall to hopefully get this, uh, new concrete deck put on this bridge. This agreement is the oversight of that construction. It's part-time inspection services. They'll only be out there during the times that are needed and they're built on hourly, hours worked, they get hours paid. The total amount of the agreement is not to exceed $37,000. It's very similar to other part-time inspection, uh, projects that we have going on throughout the county. So requesting execution of that agreement with BFNS.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Uh, next item on there is a additional cell phone request for the highway department. Uh, the commissioners have the contract for the cell phones, the cell phone services and pay the invoices. And then we get bill of quarterly highway and we pay commissioners for our cell phones. So anytime we have to add a cell phone to our plan, we have to come before the commissioners to ask for that approval. We have one individual that's in a similar role as three other individuals that works, has direct reports and works with contractors and other folks and just requesting an additional cell phone for that person.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Do we have a list of cell phones and the numbers of who they belong to?
We have a list of highway, but I don't know about whole county. I don't even know how many cell phones.
Tammy was looking into some of that. What?
I'm still working on that. I'm trying to get access to the carriers. Sean's, I'm working on giving me that, so.
Thank you.
So we'll work with IT. I think Sean's the one that actually gets the phones, right?
Actually, yours and Max's are on the handles.
Okay, so we're with Max. There's a lot different looking parts there. Your eyes are getting a little hot.
Our cell phones, it's got to be cleaned up this year. It is too many vendors. I don't know why we fill our own, our own agencies. That's just obnoxious.
My favorite part is cutting the paper check that we cut in their office and we hand and then they take it back.
We touch it four times.
The same piece of.
To pay for your cell phone.
Email on to the next item. So Avenue Master Services Agreement is the item, it's an on-call agreement for services to, in, in general, it's an on-call services agreement with, then we can get task orders. The purpose of getting this agreement in place was our individual that has been working with us for a number of years reviewing development plans. They come to the various agencies, uh, for developers and they're gonna be, you know, impacting roadways and infrastructure that we maintain. So this agreement is for, um, an hourly service for them to review the development plans and ensure that they're meeting our standards. And then we provide comments through this individual that works for Avenue and, uh, ensure the developer has the con, the, the correct information and that their plans meet the criteria. And then we build a developer for those services. So this is a pass-through. We pay for the service and we have an ordinance in place to get reimbursed for that service. So it doesn't take taxpayer dollars to review this on the developer, for developer, provide comments. And then many times the development changes and we have to do it again or new developer takes over or the development dies. It doesn't end up happening. So this is a way to prevent us from using staff time and taxpayer dollars to review the developer's submissions. So we would not be incurring any costs for this service because we pass it through to the developer. We pay for this out of operations fund, which is permit fees, and then get reimbursed.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Uh, next item is another unofficial local detour for State Route 32. That was part of the same project, but wasn't directly brought to our attention exactly what the closure plan was gonna be until the last one got completed. So State Route 32 is now planned to be closed east of State Route 75 for 20 days, starting as early as June 2nd after Western Middle School is out. Uh, similar to what they did on the west side of State Route 75, changing some culverts. That's part of their, uh, plan for adding additional passing lane on State Route 32. So this unofficial local detour, which is the part we would use, local traffic should use, the official detour takes a long way around. But the unofficial local detour would be 650 West to 50 South, back to State Route 75. We've already worked with them because of the short notice that we received and asked for approval to get down dust control on 650 West because we know there's gonna be a massive amount of traffic that starts using that roadway as soon as they close the road. There's a total of four pipes that are getting replaced. Uh, some of them are between 700 West and 32 and then there's one out by 650 West, but their detour and their barricade will remain at 650 West for the entire 20 days. So significant impact to the road users on State Route 32 is a lot of traffic on that roadway. It'll be a similar challenge to what we had when it was closed on the other side of 75. Many roads will get impacted. They will only reimburse us for expenses on one road, on one route. So we are, uh, 650 West was the most logical choice and the one that is also gravel will be the major impact people live out there. When they start getting hundreds of cars a day on a gravel road in the middle of June, it's nice and dry. So expect impact to locomotives and inconvenience to local residents. Requesting execution of that letter of understanding with NDOT for the unofficial local detour on State Route 32.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Uh, next one is for Indiana Side Barricade. It's a quote for our construction ahead and in-construction signs that we use for our road program, roads, the roads that we're using our staff to do the work. Uh, we requested quotes from three different providers of the service. And the lowest quote that we received was from Indiana Side Barricade for $53,260. It's for 226 signs that will be placed temporarily throughout the summer until all of our roadwork has been completed. Just requesting execution of that quote.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Uh, the next one is titled on the agenda as Boone County ADA Coordinator. Want to talk about a little bit more than just ADA. It's also Title VI Coordinator. Not really the highway department's role, but want to give you the heads up. We were notified by NDOT, uh, that we're required to be in compliance with the federal guidelines because we receive federal dollars. And there was a notice that was sent out for federal awards. We had submitted applications for projects back in November. We were rewarded one of the two projects, but we can't get that federal funding until we get in compliance with the ADA and Title VI plans. It's not really an NDOT requirement. It's a federal requirement that anybody receives federal dollars and NDOT is the one that passes those federal dollars along, along to the local agencies. So we are not special or unique. My understanding it was that many local public agencies got the same notice. However, ours is a little different because we do not have a Title VI Coordinator currently. And that was formerly our HR director was filling that role. Max does the ADA, which is Americans with Disabilities Act. So two different things. One is Americans with Disabilities and the other ones is, um, has to do with discrimination. So anybody that would feel discriminated against by anybody that works for the county, there needs to be a process in place on how they would file a complaint, ask questions, gather details. So in the past, it's gone through a variety of different people that have been the Title VI and ADA coordinators. But the Title VI needs to be more, um, somebody that works for the commissioners, but has, can work with all county employees and provide training, also provide the, um, proper reporting that is necessary to keep your Title VI requirements met. Was emailing with Beth, uh, back and forth on this because it, the information came from an attorney from NDOT saying what we needed to do. I'm open to ideas and, and discussion on what you guys would like to do. There's been times it was the planning director. There's been times it was the administrative assistant for the commissioners. It's been the HR director. So I kind of encouraged Beth, hopefully she could do it. I mean, it's a lot of attorney stuff. It's a lot of, um, documents that have to be done. So seemed like her wheelhouse to me, but you guys can make whatever decision you would suggest.
I move to make the, no, no. I didn't finish that. You didn't hear what I said.
I don't mind doing it. It seems to make sense.
So she would be the sole person then?
It has to be someone is the coordinator. The Title VI Coordinator has to be an individual. Their name has to be written on the application documents. They will be the person that this individual from NDOT works with to make sure our plan is in compliance, forms are filled out and submitted to the right locations at the right time.
I'll move to, uh, have Beth Copeland fill that role.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Uh, next item I had was, it says Elon City Quote. Uh, this is a, uh, quote for signs that have been determined to be needed. So the signs aren't necessarily needed. This, this quote for these signs are a special request of the residents around the Lilly project, um, on the north section, uh, the current ongoing Lilly project where buildings are being built. Not the boundary project, something that we sort of anticipated as the project progresses and a lot of traffic changes and the traffic pattern changes substantially from what it was previously. Uh, we set a 35 miles an hour speed limit on the north side of the project on 150 West or Whit Road, north of 450 North. Uh, the speed limit on 375 North was not addressed, um, as we did the expansion on that roadway. There's been requests from the residents, uh, to look into the issue. We actually took our traffic counters and were able to verify that we did not have a speeding issue. We definitely have a difference in the number of motorists that use that roadway, the time that they use that roadway. Uh, so the request on this one is to, to get these signs, uh, ordered now. There's gonna be a future request probably at the next meeting to pass an ordinance to set the speed limit at 35 miles an hour. Might have to work with Beth to get that drafted, but in order to get these signs, these signs have a radar inside them that will tell the motorists that they're driving too fast. They're exactly like the signs on the north side of the project. So they're quite expensive. So our concern has been shared with the, the Lilly, uh, group. They brought this idea forward and said they would be willing to pay for the price of, uh, of the cost of these signs. Uh, they had paid for the price of the cost of the signs on the north end of the project. They've noticed that there's been, um, more satisfaction from the residents. It gives feedback to the motorists, slows down the traffic. We want to use these with our section of 375 North, which is from the new bypass or Webber Road from 39, uh, to, to Webber Road on 375 North. Uh, we already worked with Lebanon to do the same. So they want to set a similar speed limit. Uh, we've already done all the steps taken to, to establish what the speed limit should be. And we want to collaborate with them to get the signs posted and placed, uh, to, to remind those motors leaving the Lilly site as well as, as coming into the Lilly site, uh, what the speed limit is supposed to be. So the, the quote for the, the Elon City signs, um, I have a, some additional documentation. I think I sent it to you guys. But the cost would not be anything to Boone County, uh, because Lilly is going to reimburse the entire cost of those signs.
Reimburse them, will they?
We are going to buy them and they will reimburse us. That's why we would be executing the quote.
Do you have the amount?
The amount, the total amount is listed in here somewhere by staff papers.
What was that?
$18,850.
There's a total of six, there's six, these are not the actual speed limit on a sign. These are the feedback piece that goes underneath the speed limit on the sign.
Move to approve.
Second.
Subject to legal. I have not read. There's terms and conditions in back.
So good. I meant to say that.
Second.
Operations fund? Operations fund, people are paying $49.92.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Uh, the final item I had was the 2024 Annual Financial Report, uh, the highway, uh, state requirements that we have to submit this financial report annually. Several pages, a lot of documents, a lot of numbers, a lot of effort goes into it from our administrative staff collaborating with the auditor's office. It all comes from budget status reports and all of our funds that we use. The breakdown, it gets a lot more challenging is, is associating the hours worked, uh, that we have to break down. So, um, requesting execution of this is due by June 1st, has to be executed by the county commissioners before we submit.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, commissioner appointments for the insurance and compensation committees.
Uh, I move to appoint Amber Cho to both of those committees.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Except for staff reports, area plan. Capital investments and facilities, max. Health department. Highway department. Human resources. IT support. Communications. Fairgrounds, uh, or 4H Fairgrounds, I'm sorry. Andrea.
Good morning. Andrea Hatfield with Purdue Extension. Uh, so not to add to the meeting, but I was asked after the last commissioners meeting if I wanted to say a few words about extension at these meetings. And of course I said, sure, I'd be happy to share. Uh, so I'm gonna give you a little bit of an update. I know at least one of you was able to come to our annual meeting in April. And if the other two of you are there at some point and I missed you, I apologize. It was kind of a busy time, but just to give you a little update. Uh, and for those of you that may not be aware, Purdue Extension is actually a branch of the university with an office in every county in the state of Indiana. And our, our role is to bring the research-based information from the university to the county, share it with the residents to help improve lives and livelihoods. So we exist due to state and federal laws that were created that have at least one landright university in every state and in, in Indiana, that's Purdue. Uh, so there are four program areas within extension, health and human sciences, community development, ag and natural resources, and 4H and youth development. So our office is located on the fairgrounds. Um, in addition to the three Purdue employees that are contracted through the county, we have four county support, county-paid support staff that I've led as the county department head. Uh, so as far as what's going on right now, our health and human sciences educator, Pandora Taylor, just finished up some financial lessons with third graders through a program called Captain Cash. Uh, she's also been working with, with them hospital to offer some employee wellness programs that they use for their, um, uh, for their HSA credits and things. And I know the county's been offering some of those. I know Amber has sent some of those out. I have a brochure I'll share with all of you that if you want to take part in that as well, would be a free program to offer to county employees. Uh, we've also recently shared that with the chambers in the area so that they can offer that to small businesses as well. In the 4H world, our educator Stephanie Gaye has been busy managing a thriving youth program. Enrollment in 4H is now a rolling deadline, so it's not too late if people still want to join 4H for the year. But we're right at 1,000 members, so we're very excited about that number with 150 of them being brand new this year. Last year, we only had about 50 brand new, so that's a super increase. So we're excited. Those of you that are familiar with the fair, you know this time of year is the big ramp up. Uh, we're about two months away. So we just passed our big May 15th livestock deadline. So if there are any kids that still join, they would have passed, they've missed that deadline. But there are a lot of other projects they can still do if they want to still, um, get involved. And if you stop by the fairgrounds on any given night right now, you will see multiple 4H workshops going on where kids come and they learn about these projects and, and are educated. I think we're up to about 250 workshops a year that we do for them. I serve as your ag and natural resources and your community development educator. Uh, our 14-week master gardener program just wrapped up. All 12 of our participants passed their final exam. Uh, so they will start their 40 hours of volunteer service. And as part of Purdue Extension's farm stress team, I just presented to an ag class at Western Boone to talk with them about farm stress, um, at the youth level. And I've also been asked to have a booth at a Hay and Forge event coming up, uh, at the beginning of next month. I've also been asked to help with a farm safety booth and continuing my awareness, increasing awareness about ag, things going on in community, especially during this busy spring planting season. We do a lot of safety programs. Uh, as your, uh, community development educator, I serve on the digital transformation team for Purdue and we've been teaching digital skills lessons. And next week, for anyone that's interested, we have an internet safety class coming up that's open to the public. You just have to RSVP to the office. That's just a few highlights. I hope that's what you were wanting and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment.
Tony Harris, Chair of Boone County. In March, I need to repay a favor because Commissioner Pell, um, made sure that you all knew that it was my birthday. And today it is, so I would like for everybody to, I'm singing happy birthday to Commissioner Pell.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Scott, happy birthday to you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Sheriff Harris.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? Auditor Crown.
Auditor Crown, public comment, I just want to, um, give a shout-out to the window people, they have finished our office, they did an amazing job, um, and I know they probably don't hear it from a lot of people, but it was a little out of our norm for about two weeks, but it, they were very easy to work with, moved around us, and I appreciate that. Just hope, Max, it doesn't take you here to get my voice.
We just talked about that this morning.
Because it's very, very bright.
The windows really do look good.
We look like little angels with our halos.
Uh, public comment?
Chuck Tru from Waystown. I'd like to address the Commissioners today because you appointed two board members to the Hussey Mayfield Library Board, and I have concerns about the harmful events the library is offering our children. Last year, the library promoted LGBTQ Pride Month, during which they had a pride party for sixth graders through college age. The invitation in part says, whether you're gay, trans, an ally, or anything under the rainbow, you are welcome. This event put children together with possibly adult trans people taking cross-sex hormones, puberty blockers who have had gender reassignment surgery. Why would the library even think LGBTQ Pride Month is something they should be involved with? This past March, the library had a book display celebrating Transgender Visibility Day. Christina Holden and I met with the library executive director, and she justified this display by saying it was in the adult section. I've seen many children in the adult section. This display had books that would have drawn the attention of these boys, these children, like the book with the picture of a boy in a girl's cheerleading uniform on the cover. When we met with the library director, she told us the library will again be promoting Pride Month this year, and the special event will be for adults only. This June, there's an event called Pride Be Dating with a Book. The description in part says, discover the world of LGBTQIA+ lit and join us for a vibrant celebration of LGBTQIA+ voices as we explore smorgasbord of colorful stories, diverse characters, and captivating narratives. This event is not listed for adults only. The audience is listed as adults eighteen and over, and teens thirteen to eighteen. This activity once again puts children and adults together. There are many more youth that identify as LGBTQ today than there were fifty years ago. I believe this is because organizations like the Hussey Mayfield Library are promoting and normalizing it. We just celebrated Mother's Day a couple weeks ago. Children in a gay household have no mother. Children in a lesbian household have no father when we celebrate Father's Day in a couple weeks. Children in a transgender household could have a mother who's a biological male and a father who's a biological female. Why is the library promoting this? Tax debt, taxpayer dollars should not be used to promote the LGBTQ agenda. We need a strong library board that says no to the library director when she proposes something like this. When Bud Light put a transgender woman on one of their cans and targeted sold transgender clothes for children, the public said no, and they both lost billions. When you're dealing with a government monopoly like the library, the public cannot take their business elsewhere. That's why we need leaders like yourself to use public voice and speak out. I'm asking you to contact the library board and ask them to no longer promote the LGBTQ agenda, and when the commissioners have an opportunity to appoint board members, uh, to appoint men, board members, that you appoint members that are opposed to the library promoting these events. Thank you.
May I give you some papers?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other public comment? Approval of claims.
Um, so I was going through the claims this morning, and I noticed that there was an item for, uh, under the Public Health Services for Attorney Fees for the month of May, uh, for three thousand dollars, and, uh, I, I got some information, evidently there's been some sort of an agreement executed with outside counsel, um, which I don't know a lot of the details of. Uh, when Beth was being considered as an in-house attorney, I did ask for all of the outside counsel, uh, fees that had been paid in order to be able to evaluate whether that made sense or not to hire an in-house attorney, and as part of that, I don't remember the exact numbers, but the, uh, the annual expense for an outside attorney for the Health Department was somewhere in the range of three to five thousand dollars. So this appears to be, um, quite a substantial increase, number one, and then number two, I don't understand why we wouldn't use our in-house attorney if there's going to be a substantial increase. So I will make a, I think this situation deserves some investigation, um, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the claims except for that, uh, line item.
What's your, what's your saying is the, this legal service fees have went from three thousand a year to three thousand a month?
Something like that, yes.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Any Commissioner comments?
Um, just one quick comment. We have, um, on the Hamilton County Airport Authority Board, we do have three applicants, but we are still waiting on some information, um, and then, of course, there could be additional applicants, but I, I think we'll anticipate making that appointment at the next meeting.
Okay. Are they done?
Nope.
Okay. With that, adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Thank you, everybody.